All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, August 11th, 2021. So at this time, a lot of things going on. We'll have a moment of silence for whatever your concerns are. Thank you. Alderman Ambrose, if you'd please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Brian, our city clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Grip.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ten, present, Your Honor.
You're getting kind of good at that. All right. Thank you. So again, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the City Council. Like, again, welcome everybody in attendance and anybody that's watching on any particular electronic device. We certainly respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that, as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with everybody in Davenport and around our region. We're happy you're participating in our city government and that your participation, please, we'd ask, reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport and our region better for everyone. Especially for the folks in here, if you have a phone, I'd ask you to put it on silent or to turn it off, simply because when people talk up here, sometimes it gets in the way. That's all. If you want to address the council on any specific item, please come to the podium right there. The microphone's above you. We'd ask that you give your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You'll have the opportunity also to address, besides anything particular to any individual discussion item, there's public business at the end. Again, name, order, address, and you'll have five minutes. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. Will an Alderman move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for July 28th, 2021?
Seven.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator, any update for us this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Next item, will an Alderman please move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for August 4th, 2021?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. That's approval. We have four appointments and two proclamations this evening. We'll do the appointments. First, for the Design Review Board, we have Carla Anderson, new appointment. Tori Tibbet, new appointment. Mark Mir, new appointment. And then the Scott County Public Safety Authority, Carlton Wills, new appointment. I'll accept a motion for approval. Motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That's approval. We have four appointments and two proclamations this evening. We'll do the appointments. First, for the Design Review Board, we have Carla Anderson, new appointment. Tori Tibbet, new appointment. Mark Mir, new appointment. And then the Scott County Public Safety Authority, Carlton Wills, new appointment. I'll accept a motion for approval.
Motion and a second to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That's approval. We have four appointments and two proclamations this evening. We'll do the appointments. First, for the Design Review Board, we have Carla Anderson, new appointment. Tori Tibbet, new appointment. Mark Mir, new appointment. And then the Scott County Public Safety Authority, Carlton Wills, new appointment. I'll accept a motion for approval. Motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. And I believe Clay Merritt from Public Works is here to accept this.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Just want to take a really brief moment and thank the mayor and thank the City Council on behalf of the Public Works Department and our staff down the wastewater pollution control plant. Thank you for your continued support. We really appreciate it every year. If you haven't, or if you in the public hasn't been to our wastewater plant and they want like a little lesson in chemistry, more than welcome to do so. It's really educational and we welcome the time for people. So, thank you very much.
And bugs. The next one is Water Quality Stewardship Month. Alderwoman Lee, please.
Thank you very much. I am happy to do this one. Says, whereas the water quality of Scott County's streams, lakes, and rivers directly contributes to the health and well-being of the citizens of Davenport and our ecosystems, including our drinking water, which is drawn from the Mississippi River. And since 2003, the Partners of Scott County Watersheds has been at the forefront of monitoring water quality in Scott County and strives to not only improve water quality, but work toward flood reduction by providing residents and various organizations with education, technical support, and financial assistance to promote and install best management practices. And Partners of Scott County Watersheds has engaged in thousands of community volunteers to participate in snapshot water quality monitoring and education events. And whereas, the City of Davenport recognizes that the Environmental Protection Agency founded National Water Quality Month in 2005 to promote conservation of our natural water resources. Now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of August as Water Quality Stewardship Month and encourage all citizens, businesses, community resources, and agencies to join us in spreading awareness and education while continuing to be good stewards of Scott County Watersheds, dated this 11th day of August, 2021. I move that we accept this proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I just want to say, this group, I've been working with them for about a year now, and this group is the primary group for working with our fresh waters here in Scott County and testing them, keeping them clean, and trying new technologies for our creeks. So with that, I would like to ask Kelsey Denoyer, who's the watershed coordinator and volunteer with the Partners of the Scott County Watersheds, to come. There she is. This is the first time I've actually seen you.
Actually, in person.
Okay, Kelsey, you've been doing great work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I won't breathe. Ready? Okay. Yay.
Yes. Would you like?
Yes, please.
I can hold my breath.
Well, thank you, Judith, to the rest of the council and to the mayor for participating in this month and helping to make a difference here in Scott County. We've been working with all of the major cities, and I guess even the small ones too, in Scott County this month to make this proclamation, and we really appreciate Davenport being a part of it. And we welcome all of you and all of you, of you, everyone at home, to take action this month to help improve water quality. There's so many things that we can do, just small steps, to help conserve our natural resources and protect them for the generations to come. And I did want to give Mayor Mattson one, as an appreciation for being part of this. And I guess you can all have dual custody of this if you would like, just pass it around weekly. We did commit to that. It was an honorary member of Partners.
Everyone. Thank you very much.
Well, that was nice.
Thank you. All right. All right. The next item, so we have one presentation. So it's called Project Scrabble Recognition. So I'll call up Mr. Rummler, and he'll, all I know is he's going to explain what this is. So we'll ask for the indulgence to Mr. Rummler.
All right. Thank you so much, Mayor, Council. Appreciate this opportunity. I'm Paul Rummler, CEO for the Quad Cities Chamber. I'm joined with my awesome team from our Business and Economic Growth, Julie Forsythe, Janelle Wolber, and Tammy Petche. They're our team from the chamber that worked with your team at the City of Davenport on Project Scrabble, which we all now know is Amazon. So we have a token of appreciation for this great partnership that we'd like to present the mayor on behalf of the council of City of Davenport, if you'd come join. As you're walking over, the Amazon project is the largest project that we've ever had in the Quad Cities area in terms of job creation, 1,000 jobs, $250 million of capital investment, and an annual economic impact of $148 million a year. Took a lot of work. City of Davenport did an amazing job. Corey, Bruce, Laura, Suzanne, worked with our team and GDRC. And so we wanted to present this plaque to you that you can hopefully hang up in the city. It's a Scrabble board. As Project Scrabble says, "In Scrabble letters, Amazon comes to Quad Cities."
Yeah, in front of those front chairs.
Do you celebrate our wins in the Quad Cities?
No. I'm ready to take a few.
Let's have a line on your clothes.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
Yeah. I think so much.
Maybe, but I didn't see. Okay. Thank you.
So this will lead into the next item, but I'll just talk about this. So I just want to take a moment as the mayor and say thank you to the City Council. Thank you to the chamber. Thank you to our staff and everyone else that has worked so hard in the last year or two, especially the last year and a half or so, to potentially, and I'm going out on a limb here, but possibly with the addition of Scrabble, now Amazon, Dividose in downtown, about 30 to 40 other business expansion, development companies coming to Davenport. Quite possibly, I think, a record job creation year for Davenport. As you've heard me say before, the key to success is partnerships, teamwork, and collaboration with many organizations. No one can do this by themselves. Staff can't do things by themselves, although they're pretty dag gum good at it. The chamber leading the way to try and attract. The council leading the way to try and maneuver and work policies so that things are in place. So when Amazon says, you know what, I can look all over the Midwest, but through the great partnership with the chamber, our staff doing the groundwork, the council having set policies, our previous councils having set policies and things in place, and then having the, quite frankly, the attitude to say, come on, we are welcome here, businesses welcome here in Davenport, in Scott County, in the Quad Cities. We want you to, if you're here, expand and grow, and if you're not, we want you to come. So that's the attitude, that's the mythology of what we do, and the amount of stuff that's going on, and do it during a pandemic, is something to be said. So y'all need to give yourself a big applause here. So then a personal thanks to you, Paul, and your organization for helping out as you did, and it's really cool to have a Scrabble game sitting up here. So, all right. So, leading right to the next one, that was my thing for a petition. So I'll look at anyone else. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things tonight. First of all, there will be a Third Ward meeting on Monday, August 16th, here at Council Chambers at 6:30 PM. This is our regular August meeting, so I hope you can join us. Anyone is welcome, whether you live in Third Ward or not. Secondly, cops and cones, which was postponed due to bad weather earlier this week, has been rescheduled, and that's August 17th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, in Van De Veer Park, the south end of the park near the fountain. Please join us, and hopefully we'll have nicer weather and cooler weather and no storms next week. So that's Tuesday, August 17th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM in Van De Veer. Then I wanted to mention a couple of things. Tomorrow night, we're going to be at Van Buren Park for Party in the Park, and that's 5:30 to 7:30. So please join us for that, and that's tomorrow. And then next Thursday, put on your calendar, Party in the Park at Northwest Boulevard, Northwest Park, I'm sorry, from 5:30 to 7:30. So, but tomorrow night it's Van Buren, and we hope to see you there. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. To reinforce how big a deal Amazon coming to Davenport is, I don't think any project that in my time on the City Council has ever had a code word before, and the city administrator will probably be able to back me up on this, I for a brief moment in time thought we were actually getting a Scrabble factory. They must make those things somewhere. So this kind of soothes that void, that wound. The second thing is I wanted to share my own personal excitement about the riverboats that are landing at River Heritage Park each weekend. It seems now, any given weekend, there's, I imagine, hundreds, if not thousands, of visitors coming to the Quad Cities, but none are arriving in greater style than the folks on the riverboats. And it's been exciting to see not just the riverboats on the landing, but the buses shuttling people to and from different locations, and people on the sidewalks and filling our locally-owned businesses. Be prepared, one of them might stop you on the sidewalk. It's our tendency to be humble about our town, but the type of fellow that gets on a riverboat to explore the Upper Mississippi is probably curious about our city, and you don't want to be stumped. Be proud and be prepared to tell them what is great about Davenport. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Condon. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. First of all, I originally picked Monday nights for my ward meetings, and I try to be consistent and hold them the same time, the same day of the month, and the same place, so people don't have to keep track. And Monday was terrible, because that's when a lot of holidays were. So I changed it to Thursdays, and now I'm in competition with the Parties in the Park. And we didn't have any last year, Parties in the Park, so it was okay this year. So I am still holding my ward meeting tomorrow night at the same time as Party in the Park, which made it difficult to get someone from the city to speak. However, I'm very excited, because we will have Clay Merritt speaking, and he's going to be talking about what's going on in the city for projects, including road projects and capital improvement projects, and answering questions, and of course, I'll be taking questions as well. And that's going to be at the Eastern Library at 6:00 and also virtually. So you can get on online, go to the city website, and just scroll down to the calendar, and it'll tell you how to get on, doing it through the virtual. So I'm very excited. Let's see, it looks like we're getting a couple of new Good Neighbor Project organizations and neighborhoods in the Eighth Ward, so that's pretty exciting. And I just want to say something about, very exciting about the wastewater treatment plant, since we're honoring the good folks that work there. We have, I have an environmental background, and I've worked with wastewater and management for a long time. And I want to say that this city has been very forward-thinking. The City Council has approved money for our wastewater treatment plant, and we have what I believe is a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant. And that's something to be very proud of. We just finished paying off and finishing the 1930s Interceptor, which takes care of a lot of leftover problems with sewage going out and water coming in and filtration into those pipes into the wastewater treatment plant. And we've got new technology for lining the pipes under roads, so we don't have to tear up everything to fix the pipes. So I just wanted to say the City of Davenport has done a great job, and the people who work there have done a great job. Clay, is there anything you want to say in addition? Okay. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I sympathize with the issue of having a ward meeting and then having a city event crop up, because the pushing back of cops and cones now conflicts with my ward meeting this coming Tuesday. But if having a good time with our fantastic police officers and eating ice cream doesn't appeal to you, you're welcome to come here about traffic calming. We'll have, I really can't sell this as well as I'd like to, but it will be at 6:00, and maybe I'll bring cookies or something, and we'll get to learn about the pilot program that we're doing for traffic calming, and hopefully find good results with that, because I know there's a lot of neighborhoods that have been struggling for years and decades with people not going the speed limit that they should. And so I'm really excited about this new journey we're taking to try to explore new options to combat that, and I hope you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. It seemed a little eerie this morning with the, what I call mini derecho that happened a year and a day after the big derecho happened. And I personally had some larger branches fall in my yard and was out of power for six hours, but I was wondering if either Corey or Clay, if one of you guys would be able to give just an update on where we stand as a city, and if Public Works will be doing anything special at all in terms of debris pickup or things like that.
So we would encourage everyone to follow the city's social media. We did have pretty significant trees down, again, relative to last year, probably the 1% mark, but there were pockets of town that were pretty significantly damaged, not by big trees, mainly by limbs. So much like last year, if you remember cleaning up, if you can get your tree and limbs down to five-foot segments and place them out on your normal pickup day, solid waste will be going through with a special yard waste cycle.
Thank you. And City Administrator Spiegel was nice enough to send me a picture that our Tree of Hope is still standing strong. So the storm did not knock that one down, which would have had so much irony with it. So I'm glad that guy is still growing, growing nice and strong. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Was the W flag? Oh, that hadn't been up for a while, so. Sorry. And I'll be remiss, I have one alibi, I apologize. There was a great thing that happened yesterday, and another collaboration, teamwork, partnership thing. So, again, thank you to the City Council for giving up $1 million, and the county for almost $700,000, Bednor $300,000, John Deere $500,000. We've been talking about the youth assessment program for a long time. It is now in place. It's now, it has a financial agent in United Way, it has family resources to hire and manage, and you have the support of three county governments and private entities in a public-private partnership that maybe, again, hasn't been equalized in a long time, to assist our youth. So again, the community's been talking, working, and through, again, through much of the behind-the-scenes work of our staff and folks, we just, you guys just did this, so that's a great thing. So I apologize for not bringing that up also. So not seeing anyone else, we'll move on to the agenda. We have a few items on the discussion agenda, so first item is a third consideration of an ordinance for case REZ 21-01, being the request of Dan Lorenzen on behalf of Rock Church Ministries to rezone Lot 2 of NIM's acres from S-0S Open Space District to R1, Single Family Residential District. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial, so eight votes are required from the City Council to pass. Is there any public with comment? Okay. Excuse me. If you do, again, podium, microphone, five minutes. Ward name or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know, but we've seen you, so.
Yep, yep. So you guys are familiar with me. I'm resident of the Second Ward. My name is Joshua Agwello. I'm an architect with Streamline Architects, the firm that's responsible for the design of Rock Church. I'm also a member of the body of Rock Church. First of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank the City Council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, for being patient in this process. I think this is the third time we had it tabled, a couple times with consideration from the City Council, so we thank you for that advice and full consideration in this process. So, another thing I would like to say is, being a part of this process has opened me up to city government, and I think that's amazing, just coming through these doors, what it's done for me, just being involved, whether it's online or just checking the agenda, is amazing. What just coming through those doors can do as far as a regular resident like myself and being involved in city government, even if it's just being aware of what's going on. With that being said, Rock Church is a body of mature believers, and we understand that a church is not a building, it's a people, as represented by those in attendance here tonight. But we also understand that what it takes getting someone through those doors, whatever that might be, in our case, we feel that a new facility would be an effective tool in evangelism, getting people through those doors and letting the Lord do the rest. So that's why we're here. We're here to build a new facility. This is a rose out of necessity, because currently we are having church at a CrossFit gym, and we're outgrowing that space. It requires us to do, remove equipment from the space, and then set up chairs and set up the AV equipment, and it's a great team-building, bodybuilding task, but something tells me that we're not going to miss it. And so that's why we're here. We want to build this new church. We really feel like that if that's what it takes to get new believers, new non-believers through those doors, just like me, just like I came through these doors involved, then so be it. I think we've provided enough information as far as our team, the competency of our team, you know, Streamline Architects has been here, been doing this thing for seven, eight years now, and we've teamed up with Townsend Engineering, and it's been out to bid to other known contractors, well-known contractors in the city. So I thank you for your consideration, and yeah, thanks. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay. We heard you.
My name is Ari Rashidi. I live at 326 West Fall Street, Cross Street Harrison. I don't know what ward that is, but I just had a quick little statement here. I was putting together here. I just want to say greetings to this august body and dear Mr. Mayor and distinguished Alderman. You have before you an opportunity to tangibly increase the joy, the hope, and the happiness of several hundred of your citizens, all who work, play, and vote in the wonderful city of Davenport. We, these humble few members of Rock Church, able to be here today, ask you to weigh the matter carefully and arrive at a decision that is best for all the souls involved, both now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one? Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from Alder folks? And I see those, Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor. So there was one outstanding item from before we tabled this, that we needed to make an amendment to ensure that the access easement is recorded by the end of the year, otherwise that it would revert back to open space. And so I want to make that motion ahead of the discussion, so that once we have the discussion, we can vote on the item. And I would ask Tom Warder to read that in, and then I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. The motion would be to amend the effective date language of the ordinance to read that upon publication and the recording of an easement for ingress and egress and utilities previously approved by city staff. Additionally, this ordinance shall become null and void if such an easement is not recorded in the office of the Scott County Recorder by December 31st, 2021.
I make the motion to amend?
Is there, there is a second? Okay. Is there any discussion from Alder folks on the amendment? Alderman Dickman, are you on the amendment? Reginald, that's good, you leave it on this. Okay? Brian, call the roll on the amendment.
Lee.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Dorman.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
And McGinnis.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. That amendment's added.
Zoning Commission, for being patient in this process. I think this is the third time we had it tabled, a couple times with consideration from the city council. So we thank you for that advice and full consideration in this process. So, another thing I would like to say is, being a part of this process has opened me up to city government, and I think that's amazing, just coming through these doors, what it's done for me, just being involved, whether it's online or just checking the agenda is amazing. What just coming through those doors can do as far as a regular resident like myself and being involved in city government, even if it's just being aware of what's going on. With that being said, Rock Church is a body of mature believers, and we understand that a church is not a building, it's a people, as represented by those in attendance here tonight. But we also understand that what it takes getting someone through those doors, whatever that might be, in our case, we feel that a new facility would be an effective tool in evangelism, getting people through those doors and letting the Lord do the rest. So that's why we're here. We're here to build a new facility. This is a rose out of necessity because currently we are having church at a CrossFit gym. And we're outgrowing that space. It requires us to do, remove equipment from the space and then set up chairs and set up the AV equipment. And it's a great team-building, body-building task. But something tells me that we're not going to miss it. And so that's why we're here. We want to build this new church. We really feel like that if that's what it takes to get new believers, new nonbelievers through those doors, just like me, just like I came through these doors involved, then so be it. I think we've provided enough information as far as our team, the competency of our team. You know, Streamline Architects has been here, been doing this thing for seven, eight years now, and we've teamed up with Townsend Engineering and been out to bid to other known contractors, well-known contractors in the city. So I thank you for your consideration, and yeah, thanks. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay. We heard you.
My name is Ari Rashidi. I live at 326 West Fall Street, Cross Street Harrison. I don't know what ward that is, but I just had a quick little statement here. I was putting together here. I just want to say greetings to this august body and dear Mr. Mayor and distinguished aldermen. You have before you an opportunity to tangibly increase the joy, the hope, and the happiness of several hundred of your citizens, all who work, play, and vote in the wonderful city of Davenport. We, these humble few members of Rock Church, able to be here today, ask you to weigh the matter carefully and arrive at a decision that is best for all the souls involved, both now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one? Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from alder folks? And I see those Aldermen, Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. So there was one outstanding item from before we tabled this, that we needed to make an amendment to ensure that the access easement is recorded by the end of the year, otherwise that it would revert back to open space. And so I want to make that motion ahead of the discussion so that once we have the discussion, Thank you, Your Honor. we can vote on the item. And I would ask Tom Warder to read that in, and then I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp.
So I'm not going to belabor the point because we've spoken about this topic for several
The motion would be to amend the effective date language of the ordinance to read that
months now. And first off, I want to thank all of the folks who came down to the city council, to
upon publication and the recording of an easement for ingress and egress and utilities
city hall, to have your voices heard. I always like to see people come down and to express your opinions and be a part of
previously approved by city staff. Additionally, this ordinance shall become null and void if such an easement is not
your government. And then also to my colleagues for ensuring that this vote went to having a full council
recorded in the office of the Scott County Recorder by December 31, 2021.
to vote, which I think was the fair and right thing to do, and we'll see how it goes. I make the motion to amend. But at the very least, I wanted to make sure that the petitioner had a fair shake at his
Is there, there is a second? Okay. Is there any discussion from alder folks on the amendment? Alderwoman Dickman, are you on the amendment original?
request. So just to kind of restate where I landed with this one is that, you know, the petitioner
That's good, you leave it obvious. Okay. Brian, call the roll on the amendment.
Lee?
owned the property prior to it being rezoned.
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
It was zoned to, you would have been able to build a church when he bought the property.
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Ambrose?
He put around $65,000 of his own money into that property and gave it to the church.
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Condon?
Him and his church congregation had a vision.
Yes.
Anne McGinnis?
We changed the zoning to SOS, and where I landed is, I think, the church and the property owner should have the opportunity to see that vision through. I will be voting in favor of it, and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you to everyone who came out tonight. A lot of fresh faces, some more familiar ones. A comment from one of the earlier meetings, I believe it was the pastor, was that you all were wanting to show love for Davenport and for your fellow citizens. And I think we can really see that here by, you know, you showing up tonight. I understand that there's a vision involved here. As a council member, I feel the responsibility is to the vision for the city of Davenport. And the council had a vision for the zoning and for what Davenport would look like. And so while I hope that this church will choose to invest in Davenport regardless of how the vote goes, I have to, for my clear conscience vote, in the best interest of what I think is best for Davenport. And I do have a lot of concerns about long-term maintenance of a building that is very difficult to reuse. But regardless of what happens, I hope that you will all continue to participate in Davenport if you've got, you know, kids involved in the activities, things like that. And if you find another location, I would be more than happy to see you guys bringing in new citizens into your doors and welcoming them to your congregation and, you know, doing the good work you're trying to do. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderman Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you to everyone that showed up from Rock Church. Over the last few weeks, I have tried to apply as many theoretical lenses to this problem as I can. I've given a lot of my life to the issue of the Rock Church and the open space versus residential property zoning. And the best thing that I can come up with, and really, the ultimate judgment I have to make here, is that what we have are a set of two plans that are in conflict. Those of the city of Davenport and those of the members and the pastor of Rock Church. Now, the city of Davenport essentially has made its plans known, but perhaps, you know, not to the awareness of Rock Church in a timely fashion, but their plans were out there and they were, and they were known. Those of Rock Church said they have plans too, and they have plans that are going forward for this particular piece of land. Now, depending on how this vote goes, the city of Davenport may have to rescind their plans in the better interest of citizens of the city to go forward with their plans. But in rescinding those plans, I'm only hoping that the members and the pastor of Rock Church understand that there is a certain responsibility to that. I mean, there's a certain, this argument does not go away. What we, what our intent for that piece of land is, this is something that between the city council and the members of the church, this is something we've agreed that you would do. And so depending on how this vote goes, please remember that. Just keep that in mind. We all, no one here wants to say, you know, wants to deny development of any kind, and certainly by no means to Rock Church. But we all want the best outcome. And so please keep that in mind. Mike?
Thank you, Alderman Miller. Anyone else? Very good. Just, okay, Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. I'm still learning the buttons. Anyone who's watched my actions as part of city council knows that I do my homework on really important issues. I'm really pleased to see you all here. It tells me about the passion that you have for your church, and I think that is really important. Like Alderman Dickman, I am looking at this from a, it doesn't matter what is being proposed for that piece of land, whether it's a church, whether it's a house, whether it's a community center, all of those things are allowed in R1, but not allowed in open space. It has been zoned in open space since 2019, and there is some due diligence required. So that's been about two and a half years. And your process became, came to the city in 2020 and 2021. So I've talked about in the past that you have a very difficult piece of land to develop. It's going to be very costly developed. It's sloped, it's got floodplain and floodway in it. You don't have access to roads. You don't have access to utilities. All that's going to have to be developed, and that's very expensive, and I understand that. I went to your website to see how much money you have on hand and pledged, and over three years, you've got $390,000, a little over pledged. And according to your website, you now have about $170,000 in cash. And that's going to be for a very expensive, both the development, the access, the utilities, legal, design, all of that. We asked for public comment, as we always do, within 200 feet of the development. And if you look at what's in that 200 feet, there are no structures. We did receive two letters in opposition to this, but there are no structures within that 200 feet to get any letters from. And the other thing that I looked at was the agreement that you have that has not been filed yet, that Alderman Gripp talked about. And it does say in that agreement that your ministries grants the SCI, the owners of the land to the north of you, the two lots to the north, full access to the drive for future development processes. So any vote that we take here tonight could actually have a high probability of leading to development of those other two properties because once you have access and once you have utilities, those are the two things that make it difficult, or make it easier, not, I'm sorry, make it easier to develop and induce growth in those other lots. So that's actually written into the agreement that you have. And the other thing I did, again, as part of my homework, is I found that the pastor and his wife do own some land that is not developed, and it's immediately to the east, on the other side of the railroad tracks, to the land in question. And I used the design that you had for your proposed lot and your church. And I did a little calculation and found out that the two plots of land that are budding each other have access to eastern, have access to utilities, and are sufficiently large for what you need for what you're proposing on the open space. And it would not, it's already zoned to where you could do what you wanted to do with it there, with the church. So I've been pretty clear, and you know, anyone who's watched me on council, I'm a proponent of maintaining open space within the city. And this was identified as open space because it has such rough terrain and it's so steep. So there was a reason for not developing it. So anyway, my stand on this, and I've made it clear through the, how long has this taken? Months? Yes. I've made it clear from the very beginning that it's not that I'm against a church, it's not that I'm against your vision, your dreams, it's that I'm looking at it again, what's best for the city. And you do have options. I mean, we even talked up here about, is there any city land we could swap, which is what got me to looking for other land that might be owned, associated with the church, and identified the land that's perfectly appropriate in terms of size, access, and utilities, with a lot less cost because you don't have any of those things, plus it's flat, right next to where you're proposing to build. So my stand on this has been and continues to be that I will vote against the rezoning. But I do appreciate your passion, and I wish everything that you do well because we all know the world needs a lot more love in it, and you guys are providing that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things I wanted to say. I, you know, I know this has gone through, I know this is, you know, several weeks in discussion. And at the end of the day, even though I, as a resident myself, I paid attention to new zoning, I paid attention to my neighborhood, we made sure things were zoned the way we wanted them to, to protect our neighborhood, and I would wish that everybody in the city would pay attention to that. I do understand that that's, it can be a very dense subject, and sometimes life is busy. If you're not living in a neighborhood, that zoning is really critical too, you might not be thinking about it. And I do believe the city did a very good job of explaining and communicating about zoning. But again, there are many things that occupy people's time, and it's very difficult sometimes to navigate through all of that. So we are, this zoning you're requesting is the lightest kind of zoning we can do. It doesn't mean that if someone came, if, say you get your easements, because you do have some hurdles, you've got to get that done, or this goes back, and we don't, you know, we don't discuss it again. But if someone came and wanted to develop those two other parcels, R1 is, again, the softest, simplest zoning that has a building on it. And so I don't see this imperiling the other lots with heavy, you know, industrial or a multifamily or anything else. So at the end of the day, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to support what your vision. I understand that you had this and you were planning for this before the zoning went into effect, and that's why, if you had not been planning this, had not purchased with that idea, I would not be voting that way, but I will be voting to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Jobchin. I'm sorry, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. A half hour ago, we're talking about our great economic development successes over the last couple years and how we embrace businesses to bring them in, to expand. But yet here we have a great church that has a vision, and we have aldermen that are willing to step on their vision and prevent it from happening. I'm real disappointed about that, but, you know, we start to over-regulate issues, we'll never have economic development. And I've said this time and time again, I've been with a lot of councils, and I don't think any other council would stop this church from expanding. So I hope the city gives you the opportunity. Good luck.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have much other to add, other than just want to, I've kind of waffled back and forth with my comments throughout this process. And so with the way I'm gonna vote, I just want to say tonight, you know, again, thank you for everyone coming out. My biggest pause in all this, I've never really thought this made sense, that putting a church there, you know, and trying to rezone this land really made sense. And my biggest pause has always been just the sequential order of it. And throughout this process, I've just kind of come back around. I think Alderwoman Lee has made some very compelling arguments. I'm starting to side with her. We'll probably vote that way. I apologize if I've misled anybody in some of my previous comments. I wish the church and all of you members the best. As others have said, you know, we need more love, we need more compassion. If this doesn't go through, hopefully you will find another place that serves your needs.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sounds like we've all had a little bit of a process in squaring with this, and that's good because that's what the public process is for. And I'll just weigh in as to how I'll be voting and how I came to my decision. We rewrote the entire code book for the entire city. And when we looked at that piece of land, I'm sure we had good intentions, and it probably is a good idea from the city's perspective that that remains open. But it was a heavy lift, and we all learned a word after that process, Scrivener's errors. We had to go back and we had to fix the code multiple times for smaller things that we didn't happen to see when we were looking at such a broad topic. And during those Scrivener's errors, we had a few people who came in and said, hey, I believe you've rezoned my property, and I don't want it rezoned. And we were gracious in understanding that we didn't want to zone something underneath somebody's feet if they were using it. Now, you guys were a little bit late, but these were people that were, you know, putting on their boots each day and walking through the door, and they realized one day, hey, I'm zoned what now? And you guys are a vacant piece of land, and that's not something that you perhaps have interaction with all the time because you're busy funding and tending to your church, and this is a long-term goal. But the fact remains, despite our good intentions, we zoned something underneath somebody's feet, and we've been gracious in the past in trying to make sure that we didn't take the wind out of somebody's sails. And it's not without exception, but I think what we should be doing as a city is doing the best to make sure that everybody gets a fair shake in this as we made our zoning code better, which we did. And we have an opportunity to make sure that we didn't harm anyone along the way. So I'll be voting in favor of this rezoning.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Anyone else? Okay, so I'll just add my two cents worth. I've listened to this a lot, went back and forth, good arguments, good discussion, good advocacy, good discussion by the council. But we, I go back to, when we do stuff in the city, sometimes the intentions are good, and I think the intentions were good here. I think the overall adjustment of the comprehensive plan and the zoning was good. But we have, as some of you have said, made adjustments to that. We have rezoned things based on the zoning plan for different things. So I'd ask the consideration to support this also. So, having said that, oh, yes? Alderwoman Dickman.
Sorry, just a quick clarification that Scrivener's error means not, it doesn't mean we're gonna change this because, it means, oops, we did this like a writing error. This was not a, we changed it because we wanted to and we thought it was the right idea, and now we're changing it back because we realized maybe it wasn't a good idea. The Scrivener's errors that we changed were typos of sorts.
Yeah, I understand that. Scrivener's is just a fun word to say.
Yeah.
And...
So ladies and gentlemen, we'll keep who's on, so Alderwoman Dickman?
Sorry.
So I just wanted to point that out, that the city council did say that the reason that we chose open space for the zoning was because we thought that that was the best use, and that we would be reversing that council's decision to say that that was the best use to do this rezoning, which is our prerogative to do, but it would be a reversal of a previous decision, not Scrivener's error. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Condon.
Yeah. The point that I'll make is, we were fixing Scrivener's errors and then, as a matter of practice, bundled those corrections in the agenda with the Scrivener's errors. And so I appreciate that those are two separate things that we were correcting. So, yeah, Scrivener's error is just fun to say.
I get it.
Okay. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, so just as a reminder, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial, so eight votes of yes here are needed to pass. Brian, please call the roll.
Jobchin?
And now we're changing it back because we realized maybe it wasn't a good idea. The Scrivener's Errors that we changed were typos of sorts.
Yeah, I understand that. Scrivener's is just a fun word to say.
Yeah.
And... Sorry.
So, I just wanted to, to point that out, that the city council did say that the reason that we chose open space for the zoning was because we thought that that was the best use and that we would be reversing that council's decision to say that that was the best use to do this rezoning, which is our prerogative to do. But it would be a reversal of a previous decision, not Scrivener's Error. So, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Condon.
The point that I'll make is we were fixing Scrivener's Errors and then as a matter of practice bundled those corrections in the agenda with the Scrivener's Errors. And so I appreciate that those are two separate things that we were correcting. So, yeah, Scrivener's Errors is just fun to say.
Okay. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, so just as a reminder, Planning and Zoning Commission recommend denial. So eight votes of yes here are needed to pass. Brian, please call the roll. Jobchin?
No.
Dorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yeses and three noes, Your Honor. Right, that does not pass. The consideration is not approved. The next item, second consideration of an ordinance demanding Schedule 9 of Chapter 10.6 entitled Resident Parking Only by adding 16th Street along the north side from 75th, 70 feet east of Division Street, East 25th. Is there any public with comment? Okay. There's a motion and a second. I assume people are getting up. So I'm gonna just pause to make sure if people are getting up to leave or if people want to talk. We will pause, there's public at the end. So we'll, I'm just gonna pause here and let folks go. Okay, seeing no one coming up for this item and there is a motion and a second, any discussion from Alderman? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll. Dunn?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Ambrose? Lee?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Very good, that ordinance moves on to third consideration. The next item is, uh, wait. Yeah, sorry. Motion, Committee recommends suspension of the rules and pass it on third. So is there motions for suspension of the rules? There's a motion and a second to suspend. Brian, please call the roll for suspension of the rules. Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Grip?
No.
Dorman?
No.
Ambrose? McGinnis?
No.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lee?
Um, excuse me. Could you explain what I'm voting on again?
You're, you, there's no explanation, there's no discussion, but a no is, it's for suspension.
Oh, um, for suspension.
Okay, so again, we're voting on suspension. So if you'd like to suspend the rules, vote yes. If you would like not to suspend the rules, vote no.
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Miller?
No.
Yeah, six yeses and four noes. Right, so you need eight to suspend. That, we do not suspend, so we move to the next item, which is a motion approving the appeal of the Design Review Board's denial of case DR 2035, request for design approval for unscreen HVAC at Modern Woman Park, 209 South Gaines Street. A yes vote overturns the Design Review Board decision. A no vote upholds the Design Review Board. Is there any public with comment? There's a motion and a second. Any comments from Alder folks? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll. Again, yes overturns. Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Condon?
Nope.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ambrose? Grip?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Eight yeses and two noes, Your Honor. Very good, this overturns and it's approved. And the next item is for a motion for approval of all items on consent. There's a motion and a second. Okay, roll call for consent. Grip?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ambrose? Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Very good, consent's approved. The next item is, are there any other items under ordinances, resolution, motion? We have one. So first we need a suspension of the rules. There's a motion second to suspend. Roll call, Brian, please, on suspension of the rules. Dorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ambrose? And Dunn? Ten yeses, Your Honor. Very good, the rules are suspended, so we can add, and I'll let read, motion awarding the contract for the auxiliary site fencing to Lovewell Fence of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $72,925, CIP Project 23068. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an Alderman move in second? Second, very good. Is there any discussion from Alderman? Very good, Brian, please call the roll for this motion. Condon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ambrose? Dunn? And Grip?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Very good, the motion passes. All right, next item, is there any public with business? Again, just as a reminder, please come to the podium, microphones above you. Please give your name, order, address, if you're not from here. We'd love to know where you are, or where you're from. And you have five minutes. Thank you.
Hello, this is Kelly Cruz. I'm from Rock Island's First Ward. I just wanted to talk generally about one thing. There's gonna be some talk and a proposal coming up to make it so that if your landlord sells your building out from under you, that they need to give you no less than 90 days' notice to, to vacate that property. I think that we all understand why such a thing might be necessary. I know that there are some people that are hesitant to do, you know, to do an ordinance, you know, if the state doesn't have something similar or that, you know, you know, it gets kind of hung up on like, oh, is this our job or is this some other body's job to handle? But cities can and do when, especially if there's a problem that comes along with, you know, rental property or anything else like that. They can and do lead the way on things like that. And sometimes, you know, and if enough of the cities do something like that, then, you know, it can be brought up to the state to make it a statewide thing. That's why we have, one of the reasons why we have different levels of control. And, you know, I had a pretty good rental record when I was a renter. But trying to move in 30 days still would have been a pretty heavy lift, even if it were just me, you know, even if it were just, you know, your unit's no good and we're kicking you out. And it wasn't, you know, everybody in my building trying to find housing at the same time. It still would have been a pretty heavy lift to move in 30 days or 45 days. So I think this is a good common sense proposal. There's a lot of support for it in town. And I think that, you know, that those of you that are, that are running for reelection soon, you know, the people want to know what your ideas are to make sure that nothing like this ever happens again. You know? So, um, that's just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Dennis Platt. I'm the Seventh Ward. And I wanted to support Kelly's comments. I think it's pretty important that we all recognize how difficult it really is to move in 30 days under any circumstances. And it's even worse if you don't have the $400 in the bank that the average American has. It's even worse. And it's even worse if you depend on government agencies and private nonprofits to make this move possible because they can't perform often in 30 days. And I've got a number of people who have told me that they applied a month ago for help and nothing's happened. They're waiting. And, you know, the process has to work, I get it. Things have to be documented, I get it. But the truth is, the system can't function in 30 days. And expecting it to do so is just irrational. This has got to be stopped. It's got to be changed. It's got to be humanized. It should be something you're proud of, not something you're ashamed of. I'd like you to take a look at it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Shayna Davis. I am from the Seventh Ward and I am one of the 35th Street residents. I'm trying my best to not get too emotional because this situation, I won't explain to you guys, is very near and dear to my heart. Five years ago, I moved here from Ohio to find a better life for me and my children. Throughout the five years I've been here, there's been good things for Donovan Ford, there has been bad things. Some of the good things, my kids have been in wonderful schools. For me, I just recently graduated from college. The bad things that I experienced, some of them is that my kids both have IEPs and they were one of the children that has been polied for the last couple of years due to the lack of, how should I say? The lack of proper schooling for my kids every single year. There's been issues of why my kids haven't got this assistance, why they haven't got that. And the school noticed, but yet and still my kids are left behind. The second issue is housing. I mean, that people have to leave. Literally, I have been struggling with Salvation Army to get help just to bring up old wounds that I had just finally closed within the last year of struggling to get through COVID, get through my children's schooling and to deal with what I have to deal with, with one of my kids being emotionally, how should I say this, emotionally distraught from school. And he just started kindergarten last year. So with everything else, and for them to tell me that they need to dig up stuff from COVID kind of rubbed me the wrong way. Another thing is that everything that's going on right now, like the housing and like the adequate funding for everything should nobody have to go through, especially what I go through. I'm a mother of two children. And I have to explain to my kids that we have to move the weekend before they start school. And I still have yet to figure out what school they're gonna go to. So this right here should never happen. I have to put my own degree on the back burner so I can figure out where I'm gonna go with my kids. I graduated in May and I still have yet to take my state boards because I have to figure out where I'm going to go to. So, I mean, some of you guys may not like take this lightly, but I want you guys to understand the severity of the situation right now. Like, it hurts to explain to my children like where we're gonna go to. We have no place to go to. Plus, dealing with the riffraff, I had people posing outside of where I stayed, posing like this, taking pity of, like taking pictures of my pity of what I'm going through. But yet and still, like, everybody thinks it's okay, that this situation is okay, and it's not. People are really emotionally distraught right now. And we're needing help and it's for the things that we gotta go to to get the help. We don't want it. We have to keep opening up these old wounds. We don't want it. We'd rather struggle on our own. I literally had to scrape and scrape all the money I had left just to put a deposit on the place that I almost lost waiting for Salvation Army, just to get help. Literally, I tried a month ago. So I just want to let you guys know that like the funding that you do want to give us, understand that it takes like time, but we're running out of time. Some things need to like be like rushed. This is the type of situation that needs to be rushed for you guys to really understand. I haven't said anything, but this has to stop. Enough is enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep, okay.
Mayor, Aldermen and Women, Dave Kenny, Second Ward. Hope somebody helps that lady and gives her the resources she needs to stay in or find some housing. Because I've heard in the news that there's, I think through October, there's funding for citizens who are gonna get kicked out of their apartments. And there's funding for the landlords too, so hopefully that can resolve. Anyway, you know, my passion is gardening and while I was gardening down at the vegetable garden, I got neighbors that I ran into to sign a petition. It says, "We, the undersigned, support the effort to keep the remaining fruit trees and berry bushes at Black Hawk Garden Park, including the plantings around the Ketchment basins." And I found pretty much overwhelming support to keep what's there. I know a year ago, there was problems with maintenance and many of the neighbors were having problems with the way it was maintained. And that was taken care of. And now we're, and then some. A lot of stuff was removed that really, in my opinion, did need to be removed. But anyway, that's in the past. And what we've got left is a minimal amount of fruit and nut trees. And then there's a bunch of them around these Ketchment or Rain Basins. And those are the ones I'm, I'm hoping that the city will keep there. There's aronia berry and elderberry. And it's the only place for elderberry and juneberries in the park left. There's hazelnuts, apples, plums, what else? Pawpaw trees in there. And I got a email from Amy Kay from the city that she said that those could remain there for the time being. They could remain there, they're gonna clean up that area. I know Alderman Dunn is involved with that. But she sent me an email, said they were gonna stay there. So that's the good news. There's gonna be more fruit and edible, fruit and nut bushes there and berry bushes in that area that'll stay there according to the city staff that I talked to. So that's the good news and I'm happy for that. And this, and these neighbors, I think, will be too. There's like 16. I've sent an email to you guys, maybe you got it. So, I guess I've spent, spent my time helping with the vegetable garden and neighbors planting tomatoes there. I don't know what the city plans to do in the future. My vision before this kind of all boiled up and kind of went south was to use the bike path as an edible path. But I don't know if that's a possibility in the future or not. It would have to be okayed with the Parks Department and be done so that a minimal amount of maintenance would have to be done. But that's an idea I had for the future. So, I made up some, well, I took these aronia berries, kind of looked like blueberries. I froze some, about three packs of these, just a little recipe here. And a pack of, you boil them up and you add the gelatin. And then it took like a cup and a half of sugar and I got me two pints of elderberry jam out of it. It's a real dark color. I guess it has like three or four times the antioxidants of, of blueberries. So that's where things stand down there right now. And I hope that the city will continue to investigate ways that we can incorporate edible gardens in city-owned property in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. Okay.
Rodswood, Second Ward. 2366 West 47. Well, it took, what, almost four years for our youth summits and other stuff? I applaud you. But... All we've done is open the box of Band-Aids. 230, what, 30,000 for 300 kids? It's not enough, folks. All we've done as a city is put a Band-Aid.
Hey, sir, can you please stay so the microphone picks you up?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All we've done is put a Band-Aid on this, folks. People are upset. I pushed week after week for more money. I understand there's a lot of things behind the works. You know? But this program is something that is just fresh started. There's gonna be ins and outs. This worked, this didn't work. You know, we can always toss numbers around, like what, 1.2 million to visit our skybridge? It's a number. But 230,000, I recognize our funding is short. Our funding is hard to get. But it's a real problem here. Values, morals, respect are not being taught like we were when we were youngsters. You know, I had a kid cut me off, some of the words out of his mouth, being 12 years old on a bicycle. Wow, you know? We can't teach that. We can develop programs like you did here, but if it takes three, four years and we only got 230,000 to help 300 families from zero to teenage, like they said on the news, what about the rest of them? You know? This is a problem that needs to be addressed a little better. We can spend millions on a ballpark, millions on a park. We increase our city's budget for parks and rec because we had this, we had that manpower. We're gonna spend what, 1.3 million dollars for a fire truck? We've had the foresight to save for that. We've had the foresight to save for that. But when it comes to the department, we're piecemealing. A Band-Aid here and there for our community's safety. As a citizen, that's unacceptable. I applaud you for everything you've done, but we need more as a city, as a council, as a town. We gotta figure this out, folks. We're gonna have a mass exit from our police department because they're overwhelmed. We're bringing in outside agencies from different cities when we have issues. The state police, everything here. By golly, I was born in this town. I'm proud. I am from Davenport. But right now, I'm not as proud as I should be. I'm not as proud of this council. Because this council has the capability, and you've shown that in other issues, to come together, not to squabble, not to argue over a park, or a ballpark, or this or that. Public safety is the number one issue with people. I get calls, I've talked to people, even the group here. I wish you were on the city council. I don't, honestly. I don't want your job. What, what do I want as a citizen? I want this council to step up a little more, and I'm not saying you're not. I'm not saying you're a bad council. All I'm saying is, as a group, for the city, for the citizens, it's time to step up a little more. We're tired. We want to be able to go out at night. I don't want shots fired up from my work or my house. I don't want to go down the street and get shot at. I don't want to own property and be shot at. We gotta give our department enough resources so they can do an intelligence to go after these so-called gang-related or people knew each other. We gotta gain the intelligence. We had a Nets program here that was second to none. We cleaned up Goose Heights. Where's the program now? We got what, few officers left on it? We have come up with some great ideas, but we must maintain, and we must, we're gonna have to tighten our belts. We must, as a city, come better together instead of...
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Anyone else? Motion and second, all in favor? We're adjourned. Be safe.